Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the 2021 El Dorado Candidate Forum hosted by Your Chamber of Commerce. I'm Phil Benedict, the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce and moderator for tonight's forum. I want to thank all of you for coming tonight or tuning in and listening to our candidates respond to specific questions about our city. The candidates have not received any of the questions in advance, only the topics which will be covered. Those topics include revitalization of the downtown district, promotion of the lake and recreational facilities, economic development as a priority, our population decline, city employee retention, use of excess tax funds, housing, support of economic development incentives to recruit new or existing manufacturing projects, and finally, why should someone consider relocating and starting a business in El Dorado? I want to thank the members of the JAG K program from our high school and our Chamber ambassadors and board members for helping with tonight's program. This year, we have three positions being contested. They are the race for the mayor of El Dorado, position one on the commission, and position three. Here are the rules that we will follow for tonight's forum. We'll have three rounds of questions, one round for each position being contested. I will ask each candidate a question, and they will have three minutes to provide their answer. Our timekeeper will hold up a sign indicating two minutes left, one minute left, and when time is up for that specific question and that candidate. The candidate will immediately end his or her comments when their time is up. After the formal Q and A is over, the candidates will be available to speak with individuals informally around the room and, as time permits, to answer any additional questions that our citizens may have. Each candidate will be asked to provide an opening statement, and in that statement, please tell us about your qualifications and background for the seat you're seeking, committees you've been a part of in the past, or volunteer positions you've had in the city, and why you want to serve in this capacity. For position one tonight, I'd like to introduce incumbent Commissioner Matt Guthrie, Herb Llewellyn, and Kelly Tector. So Matt, if you would, we'll begin with you with your opening statement.
I would like to start off by saying thank you to the Chamber for putting this together. My name is Matt Guthrie. I've been Commissioner for one term. The last four years have been very eye-opening and educational. What I will say in those four years, my number-one goal is to make decisions that benefit as many citizens as possible, but to also work to resolve small issues that affect the few neglected citizens. I have championed for the city to be a player in what happens at the lake. I am a firm believer the lake holds our path to a better future. I have pushed for our partners to be more transparent with us. Across the spectrum of dealing with the EFABC, to Main Street, to Butler, all of these relationships have been clarified and then solidified, bringing it into years of handshake deals, wink-and-look-the-other-way decisions that never really worked out for the city or its citizens. In my very first meeting as a city commissioner, it became clear to me we were in a new era of El Dorado's history. We had a new city manager, we had a strong commission. We just had to get past the dumpster fires that were everywhere. From the windmill lawsuit to budgets running in the red for years, we were given a tremendous task. The commission, city staff, from Public Works to Finance to Parks and Rec, all worked together to tighten the belts and to continue to provide excellent service with less. I can say now that El Dorado is in a much better place than when I started this term. We do not spend more than we bring in, we've paid off lake debt, we made sure the city's financial situation is stable, financial reserves were restored. We did all this by holding the mill levy as low as possible. I will make you this promise: I will continue to push for the city to be better every day. It is not common for a Commissioner to have more than one item on agenda at any time. Right now, I have three big items on the city's agenda. Lake Rec Recreation Master Plan, it's taken a year and a half just to get to this point. The commission is considering building a park out in the village, which is an area that's been neglected since they've joined the city, and a review of the city's dog ordinances, asking if we need to continue to discriminate against certain breeds. This is rare that I have this many at one time, but it shows I listen to you and will work to address your concerns. I'm asking you to let me to continue to work for you. Thank you.
Herb?
I'm going to be a little different. I came to this job or running for this position because I was asked, even when I was city manager, to run for the commission. At that time, it was kind of hard, there was a big conflict of interest, so I didn't. And ever since I've retired, I've been asked, Herb, you need to run for the commission. Please run for the commission. So finally, I've decided that that's what I want to do. I'm going to differentiate myself a little from Matt. I don't have any big plans. I love the way El Dorado is. I chose to live here because we have great water and we have great streets. That doesn't happen by accident, it happens with a good commission and good staff. So my focus is going to be to continue to support staff and to build on those traditions that have made El Dorado what it is. The lake, as an example, the water in the lake isn't great. It takes staff, it took engineers to design a plan, it takes staff to run the plant to give us great water. It's not an accident, it's intentional. The stadium is another good example. For years, the community wanted a stadium, it never got done. And it wasn't until the city commission said, "We're going to build a stadium with the school district and the college," that that got done. El Dorado, in my estimation, has a unique way of looking at things, and its collaboration with other organizations is one of its true strengths. It's been a sponsor of Main Street, El Dorado Inc. is copied around the state because it works so well. When you have that direct link between the industrial community, the business community, and incentives, it makes for things to go good. City of El Dorado has had more growth than most cities will ever have, and it's had it in 15 years since I've been here. So good jobs keep being created, and that's because of collaboration. So I'd like to be your Commissioner.
Thanks, Herb. Kelly?
Thank you. I attended El Dorado schools my entire life. I graduated from Butler, then Pitt State, been married for 18 years and have three children that attend El Dorado schools. I'm a small-business owner as well as an employee of Holly Frontier. I have coached my children in sports, served as chairman of my homeowner association, and most recently, as the chairman of the El Dorado Planning Commission. While on this advisory board, we were presented with a wide variety of cases, we reviewed, discussed, and decided on many different topics. We based these decisions on the 2030 Comprehensive Plan. This document provides a great definition that the commission should work to achieve. One of the primary responsibilities of local government is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. With all that in mind, it became apparent to me that if I wanted to influence change, serving on the city commission was the best avenue to achieve that. Opportunities to improve the housing situation have presented themselves in the past, and for various reasons, they were not approved by the current city commission. Currently, El Dorado is falling behind its competitors in this category. This needs to be addressed. But the main reason why I decided to run for city commission, I want El Dorado to be a place that my kids want to raise their families, where they have a place to work, play, learn, and call home.
Thanks, Kelly. Question number one, gentlemen. With online shopping and Wichita so close, what is your position and philosophy on how the city can promote and invest in the revitalization of the downtown district? Herb, we'll start with you.
Sure. I think that in the past, we've done a master plan for the Main Street area. It included changes and had it being more pedestrian-friendly. I'd like us to continue that and even develop it further. I think you've got to continue to incent housing in the Main Street corridor. The only thing that's going to make it prosper is people living near it and being able to walk to it. And so I'd like to continue with that master plan and develop Main Street so it's more aesthetically pleasing.
Kelly?
El Dorado Inc., as well as Main Street in the Chamber, they've all worked together. They do a fantastic job for prospective business owners. This collaboration is very important to ensure that they have all the proper information. You know, the incentives, tax abatements, industrial revenue bonds, community improvement districts are all important to that success. This partnership is critical for continued growth, and it's something that needs to be continued in the future. It is imperative that city staff, the commission, and these organizations continue to work together to achieve what's best for El Dorado, because ultimately, we all want the same thing, and that's growth.
Thanks, Kelly. Matt?
Revitalization of downtown is, and I'm going to go against the two here, but that's really not in the city's wheelhouse. We pay Main Street to spearhead things that happen down there. But I'm not a big fan of playing Oprah with the city's money. You get a new storefront, and you get new electrical service, you get new windows. Like, I don't think that's what the city's role is down there. There's plenty of programs and grants that help with this. Being that this is a question of revitalization of our town-town after all these years with an outside organization, tells me that leadership in that group is not doing well. Just like any other venture leadership is vital, seems to me we lack the accurate type of leadership for that particular aspect of our town. Downtown's path was chosen long ago. We went from retail to empty buildings. So, you know, we have churches down there, we have real estate, we have investment, and those were perfect for the time when we needed people to fill these empty buildings. I'm not going to, but revitalization means retail, and retail means sales tax dollars, which allows the city to reinvest in these areas. You can't go down and tell Joe Sungrim that he needs to move because we need a shoe store there again. I mean, I have a better idea. Let's go north on Main Street, let's go south on Main Street. We have openings down there without trying to reimagine what old downtown was, because again, that path was chosen years and years and years ago. Now, if you're talking parking lots, a different story. The city should be working on that and focused on making those parking lots better, because that is the city's property. But when it comes to the actual properties, I'm just not a big fan of trying to be a big role into that particular thing.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Approximately 1.2 million visitors come to El Dorado Lake for outdoor recreational opportunities such as camping and fishing. Do you consider promoting El Dorado Lake as a priority for the city? And if so, what do you think the city should do to promote this regional recreational amenity? Kelly, we'll begin with you.
Thank you. El Dorado Lake is tricky. You know, currently, we don't own any property surrounding the lake, and I'm not sure the Corps would ever be willing to sell property to us. Now, I do agree that the current commission has done a great job of getting activities. Matt did the jet ski race thing, that's awesome. You know, they need to continue to focus on the boating, the triathlon, fishing tournaments. You know, that stuff is all extremely important, but I, you know, I'll probably disagree with Matt when it comes to the, you know, promoting the lake as something other than just using access to the water. I'm not sure that, you know, resort type is what's best for that, generally because we don't own the land, so.
Okay. Matt?
I'm interested in going beyond promoting. I want to be a player out there. When we did our rebranding of the city, they surveyed towns all across Kansas, and when they came back to us, what they said was is that you have a unique opportunity in our state to be a lake town. There's no other cities that have embraced that. Tourism dollars, I just feel like there is a huge hole in trying to promote and develop out there. When the lake was designed, it was planned to have an amphitheater in the north end of the dam. Nick Badway and I went out there and met with designers and architects about a year ago, and the site that was originally planned is perfect for a 30,000-person amphitheater. Imagine your favorite band playing your favorite song at El Dorado Lake with the lake on a Kansas sunset off that water. That's what we can have out there. There's opportunity for local businesses to have, there's room for another marina, there's room for many different things that many of our residents would like to see out there. The Corps of Engineers is in favor of that. We are also about to sign a contract with P E D C to do a master plan that is partnered with the state parks to figure out what's best and what fits into the different zones when it comes to nature preserve and wildlife. But that is about to get going, and I'm pushing to have these bigger pieces put into that. For 40 years, the state has had the ability to do whatever they needed to out there, and they've shown us what they're willing to invest in. But it can be much, much more, and it's time to be a partner with them.
Okay, Herb?
I guess my perspective will be kind of a blend. While I do think that the visitors to the community are important, and they do bring some dollars, I had the ability to look at the sales tax receipts, and it's just not there. There is no bump. So the city of El Dorado isn't benefiting financially from the lake, we're benefiting from the water. I think that the first step probably isn't a master plan. I would have liked to have seen the state of Kansas agree to give up its lease on the lake. And so they had, when I was city manager, they weren't a very good partner. They, when we were out pulling mud, silt, out of the lake when it was low to think about dredging it, they told us we couldn't go across city, I mean, state property to get to the water in the lake that we own. So I think your big hurdle is the state of Kansas, that not shown a willingness, when I was working for the city, to be a partner at all. I love the concept. I've been to Sky Took, I've seen what can be done. I spent years trying to get the federal government to give us the final report from the project that Sky Took Lake went on, and they actually have development and leases on core property that allow for ownership or long-term leases for condos, studio apartments on the lake, as well as slip ownership. And so Sky Took in Oklahoma is a really unique program, and they did it about 30 lakes across the country, and then the program never went anywhere. So I think it's a great idea. The big hurdle is going to be the state of Kansas in getting them to come to the table earnestly. And so, yeah, I love the lake, but I don't think it's practical. I don't think we'll get the ability to do it.
Thank you, Herb. The excess sales tax program has historically funded about 350,000 of capital projects each year. The projects are developed with input from the city staff and the Excess Sales Tax Committee before being approved by the city commission. Do you think this excess sales tax fund should be used on several projects each year, or should they be used to focus in on just one or two projects? Matt will begin with you.
I love what we've done with the excess sales tax. We have touched so many parks, we have touched so many of our buildings, new amenities at softball and baseball diamonds, the senior center, major additions to six of the 13 parks that we have in town. So I guess the answer to your question is, is I like being able to get as many different places as possible with those dollars. Compared to a one big project, I just don't feel, I don't feel that that's an effective way to use that money. So I really do like how we're doing it. I think that we continue to get groups together that make those decisions, and I've listened to those meetings and their numbers and what they talk about, and they really do take a unique view on all those different things, so.
Thanks, Matt. Herb?
I wouldn't change a thing. Most cities levy a general sales tax, and it's quite often a penny, which is what the city of El Dorado levies. And it goes into the general fund, and it's divided up among the departments, and it ends up supplementing or supplanting property tax, because property tax is so unpopular. What El Dorado has done is developed its own way of looking at the world, and in this system of keeping the voters in constant contact with the city organization is unique in my experience. Every five years, we have to vote on it. It can go away, and I think that that forces the city to stay in touch with the citizens of El Dorado. So whether they did one big one or 10 little ones, it's all up to that committee. And that sales tax committee takes all these requests, comes up with ideas, and then ultimately, the decision is commissions. But the system of taxation in El Dorado's for sales tax is unique in my experience, and it's the way everyone ought to do it. It really benefits the community in ways that wouldn't be possible without it.
Kelly?
I'm going to agree with both of these guys. I think the way they currently do it is a good model. Anytime you can get, you know, a volunteer committee advisory board together that helps develop a list of projects, you get feedback from the citizens, that's the best way to do it. I tend to, you know, I think more than, the bigger list of projects, I think, is better, because sometimes they fund smaller projects that wouldn't get funding any other way. So that's, you know, a welcome addition. And also, you know, the reduction in property tax, you know, they've done that several times over the last five or six years. So I agree with both of them. The way they currently do it is a good system, and I wouldn't want to see that modified.
Okay, thanks, Kelly. I'm told in 2017, the city completed its park master plan, and that provided a number of recommendations to enhance the existing park system. The plan recommended improvements to the municipal pool, investments in the baseball and softball fields, and an expansion to the activity center. Public input has also placed importance on the expansion of the bike and pedestrian path. What do you think should be implemented as a priority by the city? Are there other park projects that you'd like to see developed in the city's park system? Herb?
One of the things that I'm going to be most focused on is implementation of master plans. Commission development of budget should be routine. Staff should develop a budget that reflects the plans in the park plan, the master plan for city development, the airport master plan. We have plans, we need implementation. So I'm going to follow the recommendations of the plan. If I remember right, sidewalks in our comp plan was one of the things that people wanted the most. I think if I remember right, in parks plan, it was a pool. So I've seen us doing projects, quite honestly, the tennis courts, again, it was a collaboration between the city and the school district, 490. I hope I didn't leave off Circle, I don't think they were involved, but whoever did it, it was a joint project. So I see that getting moved up when you can get collaboration from other entities within our community. But I want to do what the people said, and if I remember right, the pool was the top of the list, and we shouldn't be going to 10, 8, 11 until we do number one. I'll disagree with you on budgeting. I don't mind borrowing money to pay for something that I'm going to get to utilize. Paying cash for something just means that I'm being taxed for something I'm not getting a benefit of. It's going in the city's bank. And as a policy matter, I don't want my taxes in the city's bank until the city needs the money. And so if the citizens told us we need a pool, we got to borrow money to build a pool, I'm fine with that, because the people that use it are the ones paying for it.
Thanks, Herb. Kelly?
I agree with Herb. The list is pretty comprehensive that connects 2025 priorities laid out. The American Legion complex was, provided some really good amenities. Aquatic Center seemed to be a popular topic in that report, which goes back to the pool. The Central Park, they had two different concepts, new baseball and softball fields, which I think are needed. You know, I have kids that play sports, and that's a common question that we get a lot, you know, why aren't El Dorado's facilities upgraded similar to even the ones that Tawanda have? And I know that was a school board project, but, you know, same thing. So I do agree that the report, you know, it surveyed the citizens, they had, you know, community get-togethers and discussions, and so I would definitely just follow the priorities that were in that plan. You know, aquatic center and the American Legion complex are at the top, so that's where I would follow.
Very good. Thanks, Kelly. Matt?
I was part of that group that was working on the pool, and we were really, really far down the road. And then what particularly happened was is that we got a new city manager, and we learned new rules. And we learned that you can only put a sales tax out, because that's how you're going to pay for it, is sales tax, basically. And you can only put out for 10 years. Well, to build a brand-new pool that we wanted is going to take 20 years. So, and when I revert back to my opening statement, we had a financial crisis. I wasn't part of the commission at that point, but when they came to us and explained to that committee that, you know, money's tight, we've got to figure this out before we go out and start spending more money, I commend that commission because they took the opportunity to say, "Well, wait a minute." Now, if we'd have started when we did then, you know, five years ago, we wouldn't have the ability to partner with the schools who cannot use their pool now. And if we want to talk about aquatic centers and pools, you have to talk about the fact that right now, we would have built, we would have spent $18 million on a pool that the high school can't use, and now we have a pool that only in the summer can be used. I'm not against an aquatic center, but we had to get our house in order before we went that far. And luckily, we now have the opportunity to work with the school district again and say, "How can we make this happen with both of us?" Because they're going to need one, we're going to need one eventually, and so that's kind of how I see about the pools. I think the first step when it comes to softball and baseball fields, that those complexes is, is connecting everything together. One of the first things that came Parks and Rec when I was on the commission was a sidewalk to nowhere. And this sidewalk started at Riverside Park and went around the brush dump, a place where you can't patrol, you can't light. That finally died just a few months ago. So I'm more of a fan of doing practical things that we can do that are going to benefit as many people as possible. Yeah, that's all I got.
Thanks, Matt. The population of El Dorado decreased by 1.2% according to the 2010 to 2020 census. What strategies should the city implement to reverse this trend in population loss? And we'll start with Kelly.
Thank you. The first thing to address the population decline is you need to provide more jobs. You know, we talk about to develop El Dorado, they have some really good things on the horizon. You need to get, to increase population, you need to give them a place to live, which housing is a big issue in town, that's been discussed, you know, a lot. And then you've got to give them a place to work, because these people want to live in a town where they work. And it's pretty difficult when, you know, we've had a couple of projects come before the commission, they voted these projects down. You know, they were both pretty large, rough estimates, 3 to 5 million in cost. million in cost, and 41 new permits. This year, we've had 12 new residential building permits. So to address the population decline, you definitely have to address the housing issue and provide more jobs. And the Develop El Dorado is definitely working towards that.
Thanks, Kelly. Matt?
You, you say population decline. I mean, I see up and down, but we're at the same place we were since 1960. So population decline is kind of a, I mean, when you say that 1.2%, you're talking 73 people out of 13,000 people. Our town is maintained since basically 1960. We've gone up a little bit, as much as 1,000 people. We've gone down as many as 1,000 people. But we'll never match what happened in 1920. It was a 460% increase. We went from 3 to 10,000 people. So, I mean, housing is, housing is an issue if you, if you, if you look at it, and that people want to buy a brand new home and a brand new development. We have, we have plenty of how, infill lots. They get way better tax credits than building on a green space, which is, you know, which is what new development is. So a lot of those tax credits do not, they do not qualify. But if you infill, if you come in into a place that's already established, the, the commission has given them plenty of incentives, plus federal government. But I'm not a big fan of, of the city fitting the bill for trying to build development. Those developers for that. You have to find the people to come into that. But then you also have, you have a big problem in the fact that you only have one way you can go. You can't go west, because we have the highway. You can't go south, because we have the refinery. You can't go east, because you have the prison. The only place you can go is north, and only on one side of Main Street, because the other side is all floodplain. Now, if we want to invest billions of dollars to try to mitigate that floodplain, then yes, you have plenty of space to open. But the only true place that you could, that the city can do anything that I feel without putting the taxpayers' money at risk is connecting Country Club to Wildcat Way. That opens up acres of land where you can have some new development, but that's really it. And, you know, you can't, right now, a kid genuinely cannot ride very well to bike to the, to the middle school. And connecting those two, which does require almost $2 million bridge to do. But that's how you would do housing and trying to bring population back.
Herb?
I think that our population being stable is more a reflection of the, what a family looks like today than what it looked like in 1920, 1950, or 1960. Families have gotten smaller. People have less children. And so while we continue to build houses and have houses, the population has remained 13,000 since 201920. So I'm not sure that, that I'm worried about the 1%, 73 people. That said, I think that we have missed opportunities for housing and development. Your issue with the subdivision out West, great opportunity that was lost. Planning Commission approved it. The zoning next to it was industrial and commercial. I think the city commission erred when it voted to not change that zoning and protect those single-family homes. Because if I have to pick between having Holly in my backyard or a duplex, I'm taking a duplex every time. I also, I guess, disagree with Matt. I think we can go any way we want to go, as far as growth. There's great, there's great properties south of El Dorado, on the bluff, so it's high east of the refinery. I think we can go west. I think we can go north as well. North is easy. But again, you have all those property owners that get a say in that. And so I think we can't lose sight of that. But I think we need to have as few hurdles as we can for developers. I think the city historically has done that. I don't think the city, as a matter of course, invest in subdivisions or houses. I think one of our problems today is that OSB is $50 a sheet, and you, if you can buy it. And so it makes houses really, really, really expensive to build today. While I wouldn't have chosen the colors of the houses that were built out by Oil Hill, that was a bunch of houses got built, and they're all full. So I think the, and the city actually participated in that. City bought that at a tax auction, and then, and then turned it over to private development for, to be built on. So I think that was a good idea. I think that we, as a community, are only, are only restricted by our imagination or lack thereof. So I think these are just, housing and people are just things that, as soon as people discover what El Dorado has to offer, they'll come.
Thank you, Herb. In your closing statement, tell us about what you believe the role of commissioner is in your mind, and how you will serve in that role. Matt, we'll start with you.
As you can see, there's different people up here holding different views. And to be honest, I don't think you can make a bad pick. All of us care about El Dorado. All of us want the best for the community. I want your vote, and I want to continue what I've been working on. Lake development, repairing roads that have been neglected for decades, protecting the community that we all love. 160 years ago, a group of 24 men settled two miles from here, saying, oh, what was then the edge of the frontier. It is time to remember that courage. It is time to remember that adventurous heart those men had. That is the spirit our community used when negotiating with the federal government over the water rights in the 60s. These people watched not as one, but two lakes dried up. Can you imagine these people standing on the edge of what new, that newly filled El Dorado lake, knowing that they saved El Dorado? We can turn back the clock, step back and pass air and hoping manna falls from the sky. Or we can try to be like Andover and build development after development, where no one knows their neighbors. This is the fastest way to kill a town. I vote to know my neighbors. I vote to know Chris Pruitt, Christie Pruitt, Norma Johnson, Dawn and Bonnie Nichols. I want to find a way to prosper without giving up the town those 24 men dreamed about. The work that will never, the work will never be done. The challenges will always arrive. But that spirit and courage demonstrated all those many years ago should guide us into what our future holds. Thank you for your time, and please vote November 2nd.
Herb?
Would you read the question again?
Sure. In your closing statement, please tell us what you believe the role of the commissioner is, and how you would serve in that role.
The, in our form of government, which I think is the best form of government that there is, the commission plays one role, and it does policy decisions. It decides if we're going to have a police department. It decides if we're going to pick up trash. It decides if we're going to build a road. Those are policy decisions. I do not want to do management. I did management my whole adult life. That's for staff. I don't want to, and I am not going to. I don't want the commission to do staff work. I don't want them in the weeds. I don't want to spend my time talking about management issues. The commission has one employee. It's the city manager. Those discussions need to be with him. The city manager and his senior leadership staff does that work. Today's commission, as a city manager, a city our size needs one or maybe two meetings a month. We have four now. Lot of management being talked about to get the commission in for four meetings. That's not what I want to do. I want to work on policy. I want to have great professionals do that management work. And that is not what the commission is here for. The commission is to set policy as five people and one voice. And so that's my idea of what I want to do if I'm elected to the city commission.
Thank you, Herb. Kelly?
El Dorado has small-town charm, but access to big-city amenities. Water, land, and rail are three priorities we should focus on. With multiple industrial parks, each tailored to meet specific needs of the owner, and a larger workforce base within 60 miles of El Dorado. The city currently has multiple education options, shopping, and great network at parks, Sussful Community College, BG Product Stadium, Performing Arts Center, and numerous activities for the kids. All of these things make it easier to attract and retain the best possible employees for the city. I believe the city commission should focus on long-range planning, including the purpose and vision, strategic goals, and priority action items. I do agree with Herb. I think they don't need to be involved with the day-to-day activities. That is the city manager's responsibility. And I'll leave you with one last thing. It's what I started with. The commission is here to represent the best interests of the city of El Dorado, and we must do our absolute best to achieve this every day. Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you very, very much for your very thoughtful answers tonight, and good luck on November 2nd. You gentlemen are excused, and will the candidates for position three please come?
That was fun. Wouldn't you do that again?
If they want it.
This next discussion will be for position three on the commission. I'd like to introduce you to Leon Leachman and Cindy Scribner. I'll ask each one of you to give an opening statement, and tell us a little bit about your qualifications and background for the positions you're seeking, what committees or what volunteers' positions you've had with the city, and why you want to serve in this capacity. And Leon, we'll begin with you.
Thank you. My name again is Leon Leachman. I've lived around the El Dorado area all my life. Jody and I have been married for 53 years. We have three wonderful daughters who have grown, gave us many grandchildren, and we just love being here. I feel that the main thing I would say is my education, work experience, serving on the USD 490 school board, working with many, many on nonprofit organizations, gives me the tools and the ability that's needed to fill this job. I think we really need to look to the future, but at the same time, we've got to think about the past. We've got a lot of people in El Dorado that we need to serve and find a way to reach out to them to make people happy as the way we can.
Thank you, Leon. Cindy?
As mentioned, I'm Cindy Scribner. I've lived in and around the El Dorado community my entire life. From 2013 to 2020, I served as a police officer, and I achieved the rank of sergeant. Part of that, I worked at the Butler Community College Foundation, where we raised private funds for the college, initiatives for the college, and provided scholarships to qualified students. Currently, I work in Wichita at Flint Hills Resources and run Scribner Enterprises with my wife Wendy. We have a 17-year-old daughter who attends Blue Stem High School. I currently sit on the United Way of El Dorado and Big Brothers, Big Sisters boards. I've also spent time serving on the Crime Stoppers Board. As a police officer and through volunteering, I see the struggles our citizens face every day, from drugs and criminal activity to poverty to lack of economic opportunities. However, I also saw what wonderful citizens our city has. I saw people working hard for their families and working to make El Dorado a better place to raise their kids and grandkids. I believe that El Dorado has a lot to offer with the right resources. I see houses that can be invested in, that will give our families clean and safe places to live. I see an industrial park that is ripe for good-paying jobs, and I see a college that is affordable and provides citizens a chance to improve their economic conditions. I also see a downtown that wants to develop and grow if given the chance. The topics discussed tonight are just a few of the issues facing the city. The others are not more or less important. I hope that our answers tonight will show you that there are people that are willing to invest in making El Dorado a great place to live.
Thank you, Cindy. We'll start with the question about the population decrease, whether it's 73 or more. But what strategies do you think the city should implement to reverse the trend in population loss? And Leon will begin with you.
Okay. Thank you. Well, what's interesting is, hopefully, we would always like to grow. And that's something we all want to learn to deal with and understand. But to grow, we need jobs. We need housing. We need to determine, how are we going to make it where people want to come to El Dorado? If you look at our infrastructure that we have here in El Dorado, we're perfect for growth. We have a lake with water out here. We have good electricity, which we saw with the situation, that we're looking at the underground lines. They boosted transformers in El Dorado, surrounding areas. And we have major highways out here that get us to any place we want to go to. So those three areas allow us to go to people and say, hey, come to El Dorado. We've got a lot for you. El Dorado Inc. is doing a fantastic job of trying to grow our bigger areas as well as our small ones. We're one of the few communities in the United States that actually showed growth during the COVID virus period. So the idea here is, we can grow, and we will grow if we work together to exploit all these things that we have. Thank you.
Cindy?
Yeah. So I don't disagree with what Leon said on some of those points. I think that people have to have good jobs to come here, and they have to have houses. But there's a lot of communities that have that. I think there's a couple of different things that go into why people choose a community, especially if we want our population to be younger families, people with kids. And that's going to be teaming up with the school district. The community has invested in our schools. We've got new grade schools everywhere. We've got a great performing arts center. But we got to make sure that the product that we're putting out of those schools is equivalent to the communities around us. Because if someone wants a place to give their kid a quality education, and they have three or four different towns in El Dorado to choose from, and the only difference between those towns is the educational system, as a parent, I'm going to go where that's the best. And so I don't think that all of this necessary falls on the city to solve. I think the city can work with the school district to do some things. But I think we have to look at the picture of the whole, and why a family would choose to settle here.
Good. Thank you, Cindy. This is the question about the excess sales tax that has historically funded $350,000 of capital projects each year. These projects are developed with input from the city staff and the excise sales tax, excess sales tax committee before being approved by the city commission. Do you think they, these tax funds should be used on several projects, or would you like to see them focused on one or two larger projects? Cindy will begin with you.
I think it's going to depend on what's presented in front of us. If there's 10 smaller projects that are presented, and it makes sense to fund 10 smaller projects, then that's what they should look at. If there's one big pipe dream project that needs to be funded, and the only way to fund it is through these funds, and that's what's best for the city, then that's what we need to do. You know, I think sitting up here and saying, we're, we're going to do this all the time, creates a problem, because then you put yourself in a box. You always have to look at the situation when it's presented to you, and what's best with the data that you know at that time. The notes I end up here is, I, there's some things that I would like to see the city invest in that are smaller. I'd like to see us enhance some training opportunities for our police department that would make them better. I think we do a great job of investing in our fire department. But there's some things that the police department has never been able to fund, because the money hasn't been there, or things have broke down, and we've had to buy new cars, and so we didn't get these training opportunities. And those are real-world things that affect our citizens every day, or our frontline workers going out and protecting our citizens. So I think, I think to say that I would choose one or the other, I'm not willing to put myself in that box, because there's too many variables.
Thank you. Leon?
Well, number one, I have to say that I definitely agree with this tax. It's funded a lot of projects here in El Dorado. It's done a lot of good things for us. I've seen several organizations that wouldn't have been able to get by without this money. The situation now is different, though, than what it used to be. It used to be that there was a committee that sat down that didn't just work for the city, and then they delegated where those funds went, based on the needs of the community. I have to admit, I'm a little concerned that now these needs are being looked at just from the El Dorado city side. I have to admit, I like that other way a little bit better, because I like the idea of looking out through there. The library got money from that. The Elks Club got money from that, for work that they had done. And we all have these things we want to have. And sometimes, like Cindy said, we don't want to be put in a box. But you want to try and do the best you can with the projects you have. Unfortunately, from a financial area, you tend to go with something called return on capital employed. In other words, you can't say, what kind of return am I going to get out of this? Because we don't know. Maybe it's sometime where a kid learns to ride a bike, or maybe parents can get their kids to school. Maybe the kids can have shoes. Whatever it is, it's hard to say that you're going to do just one small, one big. You have to do what comes. You have to do what comes forward and then respond accordingly.
Thanks, Dan. This is the question about revitalization of downtown. With, and again, with online shopping being available and Wichita so close, what's your position and philosophy about how the city can promote and invest in the revitalization of the downtown district? Leon?
Well, I think the downtown district is very important to El Dorado, Kansas. If you look at what happened with the situation with Evergy about talking about putting underground power lines down here on the east side of North Main, that was a big issue. That will bring a lot of people in, have better parking, have people more access to our retail area. Now revitalization means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. To me, as a person who's working in Main Street and worked with Main Street, it means, hey, we have to have these buildings so that they can be repurposed for whatever it may be. We've done that a lot. The other thing is, with the organizations that we have between Main Street, El Dorado Inc., Chamber of Commerce, we've all brought this together and found different ways to make our downtown grow. Like we mentioned, we are one of the few cities in the United States that's shown growth during this virus situation, and that's because of people working together to find deals, to find things to make things happen, so that our downtown could be something that's not a dump. If you look back where we were several years back, we had a lot of buildings closed, we had a lot of things that weren't being done. Now you see the statues, now you see the potted plants that are out there, you've got trick-or-treat down Main Street coming up. So there's a lot of things that bring business to our downtown, and that's important to us.
Cindy?
I think our community wants to support downtown. I don't know if you guys have ever been downtown during Thankful Thursday, but I know that there's been Thursdays where I've forgotten about that, and then you happen to be driving downtown for something, and you see the increase of our citizens supporting those businesses, and, you know, remind you, yeah, this is Thankful Thursday. So I think our citizens want us to find ways to vamp up our downtown area and are willing to support it if we can do that. We've seen the Pierce Building recently, we went through an update, and now Great Beginnings is in there. It's a thriving business that's supporting a local nonprofit. We have someone that wants to invest in District 142, who, with the undergrounding of the utilities, is going to be able to go forth with his initiative and his vision with that building and with that project. However, I'm going to say that I don't think that it all falls on the city to make these happen. I think that it takes the private sector to be willing to come in and invest in those buildings, and invest in the entire building. We see a lot of people that have bought buildings down there, but maybe only have updated the bottom, because that's what they needed for their retail space, or their restaurant, or whatever business is in there. And the upstairs has some opportunities with it as well, but they don't take the time to invest in that. And so I'd like to see us maybe pursue some people that want to invest in the entire building, so that all of it can be utilized. We can have apartments down there, people that want to get out and participate in those downtown areas, because it's local, it's right there, it's convenient.
As you both know, the city completed its Park Master Plan that provided a number of recommendations to enhance existing parks. The plan recommended improvements to the municipal pool, investments in the baseball and softball fields, and expansion to the activity center. Public input also placed importance on the expansion of the bike and pedestrian paths. What do you think should be implemented as a priority here in the city? Are there park projects you would like to see developed in the city's park system? And Cindy?
Yeah, I think that absolutely would like to see the parks get enhanced. I think the city says that they would like to do things to invest in that, but I think that they recently had the opportunity to do that, and they chose not to through partnering with the YMCA. I think that gave the city a chance to get something off their plate without losing any services to those kids. They chose not to do that, so now we have kids split going two different places. So now, instead of having maybe one great program, which could have happened whether it stayed with the Y or stayed with the city, you have two, and you're splitting the kids going partway. So I think the city says that it wants to, but I don't know that they are necessarily showing that. As far as the infrastructure, I'm all for continuing to build parks, continuing to build the bike path. I think that with the bike path, with parks, with the tennis complex, again, there are things that the city invested in, that the citizens have shown that they will use. You drive down by the tennis complex at night, in the summer, in the spring, every court down there is filled up, and it's wonderful to see. And so I think, kind of a field of dreams deal, if you build it, they will come. And I think part of good use of government funds is to invest in things that all citizens can use.
Thank you. Leon?
Well, I think all of us would say that we enjoy going to the park, we enjoy going to the pools, we enjoy doing all these outside activities, because if nothing else, it's good for our house, to get out. But you think about these young kids and the things we have going on for them, and the senior people that like to get out and walk, I would love to see us do something with the municipal pool. Now, I haven't been privy to the numbers to determine exactly what would it take, but that's something that's been the lifeblood of El Dorado for years and years and years, and I would somehow like that to be in a situation where we could get back to using it. But it is a real-life situation if you have so much dollars. So you have to determine, where am I going to focus my money to do what I can for the most people that I can? And sometimes, unfortunately, it's not a choice that makes a lot of people happy. But I would like to go out and say, hey, we've done a good job on our pools, looking at our parks, the Summit Park is a nice park, the idea of building a park out at Oil Hill, that's the one area left, we don't have anything. Somehow, we need to find a way to get these people the things they need in terms of recreation, especially for our kids. If you think about our kids and what's going on today, it's a sad, sad notion when you see the shape some of these kids are in. We need to give them the opportunity to get out, to play ball, to be involved. I like to think that the situation in working with places like the Y gives us the opportunity to, yeah, you've got some movement problem, but it also allows us to take those dollars we would spend on that, and find another place to put those dollars where it can get more activities for the kids that are involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Approximately 1.2 million visitors come to El Dorado Lake for outdoor recreational opportunities, camping, fishing, other things.
We're coming in for a landing.
Promotion music. Do you consider promoting El Dorado Lake as a priority for the city? And if so, what do you think the city should do to promote the lake? Leon?
Number one, I'm very in favor of El Dorado Lake, but the hard time with El Dorado Lake is the fact that we get all these people going out to El Dorado Lake, especially in the summertime, especially during the holiday, but the amount of money that they generate for actually for the city of El Dorado, to me, is very small. The problem there is, to me, I hate to say this, if it didn't work twenty-five years ago, what's happened to make it a change so it'll work now to get us to be able to get where we can get a lease, where we can do all this stuff? Show me the change that says that we can do this, I'm all for going after it. But until I see that change, I have to say, I have other ways I can invest my money, other things I can do for the community. I like the lake, love to go out there, but in terms of what it does for El Dorado, the greatest thing, in my opinion, is the water supply and what that brings for us in terms of revenue and growth for the city. Thank you.
I agree that the master plan, that the city, the state, the core engineers are going to sit down, county are going to sit down and put together, is important. From a ten-thousand-point view, again, is it the city's job to invest in those resources, or the city's job to say, here's the ten-thousand-foot view or the master plan, how do we get private industry to come in to help make that a reality, so that as the lake develops and more people are coming, those resources are here for them to spend money, so that there are tax dollars that are being generated?
If I could, I'd like to throw a bonus question at you two, because you answered so quickly.
Go ahead.
The homeless population here in El Dorado appears to grow sometimes. We just wonder what your position is on the homeless population, and Leon will start with you.
Well, I think the first thing we need to understand is, there is a problem. And I know that the city met with the people who have the church where the homeless people were being kept, and it seems like, I have to admit, I don't know everything about that situation, but all of a sudden, the people at the church were told, hey, you're zoned wrong. Well, the hard part there is, you know, we need to learn to work together, to do all the things we can. I was sure would have loved the city to say, okay, if we can't be there, and we need to change the zone, then tell us what that zoning, what's the number? I mean, where can we go? If the church, for example, my understanding is, their leadership, the church itself, does not allow for zoning change. They want to maintain that they're based on religious freedom. I have no problem with that, but let's work together with these guys to determine where can we take these people in, because there is an issue. The other thing is, is I think we need to be working really hand-in-hand with Butler County, Andover, all these cities within this county, to say, hey, a lot of people are being brought to El Dorado. Well, when that happens, we've got to figure out, what are we going to do? I think we need to take care of the homeless, we need to find a way to get them back to where they can maybe be gainfully employed, or whatever it takes, but this is an issue that needs to be dealt with, and it needs to be done right away, in my opinion. Thank you.
Cindy?
That's a billion-dollar question to ask an ex-cop. I'll start my comments with this. Three years ago, if you would have asked me about the homeless initiative, I probably wouldn't have had very nice things to say about them. I'll fully admit that. After I chose to run for the commission, I was asked by one of their leaders to sit down and discuss some different things, one of them being the zoning ordinance. And while I told her at the time I didn't have enough information to speak or to say how I would make decisions on that, I learned a lot about the homeless initiative, and some of the things that they're doing to truly help these people. And so that has changed my opinion on the services that they are providing to this set of citizens, and it's a very important service that isn't founded a lot of different nonprofits. So they're definitely filling a void that is necessary. I'm going to disagree with Leon a little bit, in that I think that we have city ordinances in relation to housing and zoning for a reason, but I'm going to agree with you in that we do have to find a way to help this subset of people. Again, I'll be honest, I'm not sure what that looks like. I think there's a lot of different ideas that could be had, that could be discussed. It is an issue in our community that I think needs to be looked at from a lot of different angles, and it's not going to be a one-size-fits-all solution.
Thank you. In your closing statement, please tell us what the role of the commissioner is in your minds, and how you'll serve that role. And Leon will begin with you.
Okay, thank you. Well, first off, I think the word is respect. There's been some times when I feel like some people have came before the City Commission, and they weren't treated with respect. That bothers me. We need to respect everyone's opinion. If it's different than ours, we still need to listen, we need to learn, we need to work together, and we need to make sure that we listen to what happens to every citizen, no matter who it is. Now, does that take a lot of time? You bet it does. If it means you've got a longer meeting, you need to take the longer time to do that. But people are what the city of El Dorado and the city commissioners are all about. We need to look at people, and we need to say, we're going to listen to you, and we're going to take action based on what we hear. Now, will we always please them? No. Okay? But that's one of my major reasons for running for city commissioner, is we need to deal with people from respect. We also need to look to the future. We need to say, what's going on? We can't overlook the past. We have a lot of people that are sitting around that have hair just like mine, or lack thereof, who are saying property taxes, who are saying, how am I going to be helped by being able to maintain my lifestyle with property taxes if they continue to go up? We see mill levies that everybody's proud that they stay the same, but what do they do? They change the value of our houses, so therefore, your property tax goes up anyway. And so I think we really need to work together to say, how can we take care of our young kids, who are our most valuable assets through the schools, working with partnerships, but also, don't forget the senior people out there. We've got to find a way to help them out, too. There's a lot of things they need. Parking recreations is a good thing for them, too. Thank you for having us on all your effort, we appreciate it.
Thanks, Leon. Cindy?
First of all, I want to thank you guys for joining us tonight, whether you guys are in person, or we've got some different media outlets that I think are also watching this. Also want to thank the Chamber for hosting and putting this forum together. I think the role of the commission is from a ten-thousand-foot view. The first set of candidates up here said, we don't need to be in the day-to-day weeds. But I also think that part of the commission's job is to get out of the way so that people can get things done. Government's not always the best at getting things done, even though we would like them to, they're not always very efficient, they don't always have the best ideas, there's obviously a lot of turnover, right? In two years, there's going to be a couple more people that stand up here and tell you why they're going to make the city a better place. So I think part of the role of the commission is to step back and say, how can we get out of the way so that people in the private sector can come and invest in our community? We'll set the rules for how they can do it safely, but other than that, we give it to them to do what they do best, and that's usually not what the government does best. I do hope that my answers that I've provided tonight show you that I don't have any kind of pre-assigned agenda for wanting to be one of your commissioners. I decided to make the decision, I made the decision back in May to run. Since then, I've attended the work sessions, I've attended all of the public commission meetings. That's helped me to better understand what the role's going to be, should you guys choose me in this position. I've learned a lot, some of that information I've used to formulate my answers tonight. I love El Dorado, and for seven years as a police officer, I was willing to put my life on that statement. Now I'm putting my checkbook on that statement by starting a business here in town, and hoping that it will be successful and grow and help with El Dorado. I believe El Dorado has tremendous opportunity for growth and development, and we can do all of that by keeping the small-town feel. We have all the right pieces available to us, we just got to find a way to put them all together.
Cindy? Leon, thank you very much for your very thoughtful answers. Well done. Will the candidates for mayor now please come forward? This final session of our candidate forum will be to talk to the candidates for mayor of El Dorado. I'd like to introduce the incumbent mayor, Bill Young, and Lawrence Machetti. Welcome to the vote. I'd like for each of you to take three minutes to make your opening statements, tell us a little bit about your backgrounds, your qualifications, any city volunteer work, or committees that you've been a part of, and why you want to serve in this capacity. And Bill, we'll start with you.
All right, good evening, and welcome all of you to tonight's forum. I'm really excited, and I'm honored to be considered for reelection for the position of mayor of the city of El Dorado. I've elected to run again because throughout my time serving our great community, I've found that most people in El Dorado are competent, caring, generous, and we persevere. It's all of you, the citizens of El Dorado, who I'm honored and privileged to continue to represent in service as your mayor, and you're the ones whose support that we ask for tonight. So for those of you that don't know me very well, here's just a few highlights that I want to share. I moved to El Dorado almost thirty years ago, and I've lived here ever since. I graduated from El Dorado High School, I went to Butler Community College, and on to Wichita State. Ten years ago, I came back to work at Butler as the vice president of technology in the CIO. And for those of you that know me, know that I have been truly blessed in my life. This past October, my wife, Deish, and I celebrated our twenty-fourth anniversary. Together, we raised our daughter, Annalise, and instilled in her the values of character, community, and service. She's now a junior at Texas Christian University in the Army ROTC program, and when she graduates, she'll begin her career in the United States Army. Deish and I are so very proud of her and her desire to serve her country. Throughout my twenty-five-year career in technology and leadership, I've traveled all over the U.S., and I've visited all sorts of towns, big and small. The stops I made along the way really gave me a new perspective on El Dorado, and it helped me really understand that what we have here is something special, and I think in a lot of ways, we have to find ways to protect that. This is where I grew up, this is where I went to school, this is where I was married, and this is where I've really lived my life. I've been able to follow my dreams and found opportunities to give them back to my community through public service. I know what El Dorado is, I know what El Dorado has been, and I know what it can still become. I've served on multiple city advisory boards, the El Dorado City Commission, and, I mean, I'm currently your mayor. I've coached little I've coached Little League sports, and I volunteered wherever and whenever I was able. It's through these experiences that I've gained a deep understanding of our community, including our capabilities and those perceived limitations. Teddy Roosevelt once said, "Do what you can, where you are with what you have." We live in a wonderful community filled with talented and hard-working people. Anyone who lives here, anyone who experiences our art and history, eats in our restaurants or shops in our downtown can clearly see that El Dorado is a city full of possibility. I want to continue as mayor because I believe in making informed and tough decisions. As mayor of El Dorado, I've led the commission in a positive way. My collaborative approach addresses both immediate needs and long-term challenges. My continued commitment to the citizens of El Dorado is to leverage all of our assets, our citizens, our resources, our faith-based communities, our schools, and our business community to affect and implement positive change. All of us have a voice to add and a role to play in the growth and vitality of our community and the betterment of our citizens. So thank you for doing this tonight, and I look forward to a productive forum.
Thanks, Bill. Lawrence?
Yeah, so thank you for having us here today. And yeah. My name is Lawrence Faschetti. Many of you know me as LJ. I'm running for the position of mayor of El Dorado. I'm from El Dorado. I own a small business here in town, and I work for the state of Kansas. I have a background in construction, manufacturing, and mechanical equipment. Because of some of my work history and community involvement, I understand what projects should cost and what kind of projects the community is seeking. I was encouraged and wanted to run because of my ideas and age to make this a better community and bring back some of the nostalgia that El Dorado used to bring to me, my family, my friends, and many others in the community, all while keeping El Dorado up to date with the 21st century.
Thank you, Lawrence. As part of our 2030 comprehensive plan, it was discussed that the city developed the tools and programs to facilitate the redevelopment of depressed residential areas. If elected, what do you think should be done to increase availability of affordable housing in El Dorado? What should be done to revitalize our neighborhoods? Bill, we'll start with you.
So I think we've done, this commission and the previous commission have done a really good job on focusing on blighted neighborhoods. We've dedicated more money over the last few years to blight reduction. We've got great programs in El Dorado that have been mentioned earlier, our neighborhood revitalization programs, tax incentives to try to build and revitalize some of these infill areas. I think that we need to continue that focus. I think that we have a lot of areas in town that need some TLC, and we've got developers and we've got investors in town that are providing that. But we also have areas in town that are kind of beyond the TLC piece, and we need to recognize that. And then, you know, the city has a process in place that we've been utilizing to help with those properties, ultimately potentially, you know, raise the properties and then have those infill lots that we can then turn around and sell to investors that can build some infill homes. You look at some of the neighborhoods in town that have been over the last few years, have had some focus on their infill and the blight, and you see a new life kind of being breathed into these areas. And I think that that's, I think that that's what we really need to hope for throughout the community, and that can only really happen if the city commission continues to invest in our blighted property projects.
Thanks, Bill. Lawrence?
Yeah, it seems like El Dorado's low on housing right now, and if you can find one, it doesn't last very long. I'd like to see El Dorado incentivize some personal home builds and potential housing developments in the areas that we can find. Sadly, I feel like we demand property owners that have to demolish condemned or dilapidated structures without looking into ideas for remodeling or bringing them up to code. As such, when you find a structure that needs to be demolished, we should make a plan to replace that structure, especially if city codes have changed since when it was built. As a result from that, we get a lot of empty lots around town that you can't really build a house on because it's too close to a neighboring property. And I just, I would like to see more houses be brought back instead of just torn down and left with empty lots.
Thank you. The city promotes our community as a place for industrial development opportunities, seeking up to 10 million gallons of water a day, large tracts of land, rail, and highway access. Should the city continue its proactive economic development campaign to recruit high-volume industrial water customers, or should the city reprioritize its economic development program to focus on other opportunities? Lawrence, we'll start with you.
I think we should keep pushing to have more manufacturing companies come into town, but I think we should find companies that are looking for exactly what we can provide to them instead of just, you know, trying to find random companies that we don't have an ability to help. It takes time for economic development, and I'd really like to see us keep bringing business to town. But I think we should focus some on smaller businesses. We can prove that they're doing well, and bigger businesses, larger businesses will accommodate to that and see that we can provide to our smaller businesses and keep them running.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
So we are in a very unique position. There's nobody else, there's no other communities like El Dorado that has access to the water that's intermodal, right, with railroad, with the highway system that we have here. So we're in a great position to be able to absolutely promote to those businesses and those industries that will have high water usage. With that being said, I think that that shouldn't like limit us to what we're, who we're trying to bring to town. Skilled labor, there's manufacturing, you know, big industry. I think the challenge with economic development that a lot of communities face that I think we do really good with here is that oftentimes, they, most communities don't strike that right, that correct balance between trying to bring in the big whale and taking care of the current fish that we have. We've got some great businesses in town today, and I think between El Dorado Inc. and our Chamber of Commerce in El Dorado Main Street, we've kind of developed this public-private group of people that do a really good job of taking care of our current businesses and trying to find opportunities for those businesses, but also really putting an emphasis on bringing more jobs, more business to town. We've got some great tracts of land set aside. We've got developers that are ready to start, you know, we've got some spec buildings going in that are going to be helping us hopefully as we look at future manufacturing opportunities. But no, I mean, I think in response to your question, we absolutely, in addition to those other pieces that are critical, we have to focus on the fact that we're special, right? Like, we have, we've got the water available, we've got railroad, we've got roads, and so we do need to kind of shoot for the stars. There's nothing wrong with that.
Thank you, Bill. The city, like many organizations, has had difficulty recruiting people to fill critical positions. This trend is expected to continue even if unemployment figures improve based on demographics. What do you think the city should do to ensure that critical positions are filled? Or do you think the city should consider alternatives to service delivery instead of competing for employees? Bill?
Yes, I mean, that's a, that's a tough question. I think all of us that are in business elsewhere, we are struggling with employees, trying to find the right staff. You know, it's an employee's market out there right now. Businesses are competitive. We're all competing for the same kind of group of people. It's a challenge that stretches far beyond just the city of El Dorado because we're in a market where, you know, people have opportunities for employment within El Dorado or the greater Wichita market. And so it's, you know, we're all competing for the same slices of the pie. You know, we talked about, you mentioned population growth earlier, maybe population decline by 73 or whatever the number was, you know? We've, we're not the only ones that are experiencing that in the area. I think the overall size of the pie has remained the same. So we've, the city's put in place some new incentives, some pay incentives. I think that it's important to try to bring pay up to a livable standard within the city of El Dorado. At last night's meeting, we just approved the new pay scale for city staff, city employees. We struggled for a long time in our police department, and I think that there were, in getting employees in there, and it's really good now to see that I think we've got like one opening at the police department. I don't think, I think that we pay taxes every day to the city of El Dorado for services to be delivered. And so I really struggle in trying to figure out how we try to outsource that or come up, you know, have someone else deliver those services with our tax dollars. We've got a staff whose focus is making sure that those tax dollars are spent in the most efficient way possible to deliver services, and we need to allow staff to do that. All we can do as a commission is set the vision and the policy to empower staff to be able to make that happen, to empower our city manager to create pay incentives or create benefit incentives to try and bring people in. But make no mistake, the staffing challenges that the city is facing are not exclusive to the city of El Dorado. We face it in all of our businesses, you know, our school district, our college, everyone, the county. It's what's happening right now, and so I think we need to buckle down and find ways, creative ways from our HR department and our city manager to try and bring people in.
Thank you. Lawrence?
Well, I agree. It's hard to find employees right now. We all want to get paid pretty well. I feel like with the city of El Dorado as a whole, it seems like we have lost a lot of employees, but when you look at it by department, there's really not a whole lot of open positions. It's kind of in my experience, it's not necessarily the wages that retain employees, it's also the respect and understanding of who they are and what their wants and needs are, understanding that they have a life beyond work with their family and friends. And for me, showing those employees that they're needed and wanted and not just replaceable goes a long way in employee retention. Thank you.
Thank you. If a business owner or a new entrepreneur is looking to relocate or start a business, why should they choose El Dorado? Lawrence, we'll start with you.
I think we have relatively low overhead here for a business. We have plenty of water. We have plenty of spaces to start those businesses, especially in the downtown Main Street area. And I have a lot of people that have indicated that they would support more local business. I myself would rather shop local just for the convenience of not having to drive to the city. I like the city's, you know, 25 minutes away if I can't get it here in town. I think that we could promote the fact that a lot of our businesses did really well during the COVID area. You know, we were able to implement the mask mandate that let businesses stay open longer and made the business owners feel safe to have their business open. And I think that that, our sales went up during that time. So I think there's a lot of good points we could tell people to, show them to open a business here, bring a business here.
Thank you. Bill?
So the question is why to bring, why bring your business to El Dorado?
Why would somebody want to relocate here?
Why not? I mean, El Dorado is, look, we've gone, if you look at our downtown, in areas that we need additional businesses, the businesses that we have downtown are just, they're amazing, right? We've got, we've got businesses that truly believe in personal customer service, whether it's a retail business or a service industry downtown. From a larger industrial standpoint, you know, we kind of talked about that already, the things that we have to offer as a city. One of the things that I love about El Dorado, and Lawrence touched on it, you know, he likes to shop local. People that know me know that I keep every bit of my business in town if I can. And we have that, I think that's a common thread throughout our community. People want to stay local. We want a vibrant downtown. We need, we need that. I think that the loyalty that people in this community show is evident across the board from the small businesses all the way up to our bigger industries. And so, I mean, it's, the question isn't really why should you, it's why, you know, why not? You know, why aren't you bringing your business to El Dorado? I think, I think one of the challenges has always been, you know, I think that the city in the past has been too humble to get out and sell ourselves. We need to really do better at selling the El Dorado experience, and we've got some initiatives happening with El Dorado Inc. and with Main Street and with the chamber that help us do that. But the environment and the customer base that you acquire when you come to El Dorado, as long as you provide good customer service, again, it's going to be the most loyal customer base that you'll ever see. We've got locations. We've got spots downtown in our downtown area, and we have industrial spots, and we've got kind of all the way in between. So opportunity, a loyal customer base, and really a pretty cool town, I think, is what is, those are the three easy answers.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Getting back to the population, I'll ask you the question, what strategies should the city implement to bring the population back, to increase the population of El Dorado?
Somebody said it earlier, and it makes sense. People want to, they want to live where they work, so we, you know, we need to try and find ways to focus on bringing business, bringing jobs to town. We need to do a better job, not just as a city and as a commission, but also collaboratively with our partners to sell those great things about El Dorado, our new schools, our great community college, our great businesses downtown. There's so much, again, that we could sell about El Dorado, but people need jobs. And so, so really trying to find areas to not only help our current businesses grow and find those incentives and those programs that are available to help our current businesses grow, but also bring new skilled labor jobs to town. But then you get into the, you know, which came first, the chicken or the egg conversation? We bring jobs to town and they need housing, and so they're going to live someplace else because, to everyone's point, we struggle with not just developments, but also getting some infill done where we need it. So I think finding ways to partner with developers and incentivize development, just like we incentivize businesses. You know, we, as a city and as a community, we've historically haven't had a big problem incentivizing large employers in coming to town with tax breaks and tax incentives for a short period of time to get them to move here. And I think that there's opportunities to work with developers in a creative way to do the same thing, to get new developments. But we're not going to get people to town if they don't have a place to live or they don't have a place to work. So I think, you know, those are kind of the key pieces, and really selling what El Dorado is. Again, awesome schools, awesome community, awesome college, you know, I mean, you just, it's, we've got, we've got to do better at selling it, but it doesn't do us any good to sell it if we don't have a place for people to work or live, so.
Thank you. Lawrence?
Yeah, I agree. Housing is kind of a double-edged sword there. You can't live here, you can't move here, you know? But I think that we could incentivize more housing, more jobs, more manufacturing. One great idea I think I have is, I think with COVID, companies have seen that telecommuting works. You know, their percentages have been up, and if we could somehow incentivize people that telecommute to work, to move here, they'd be really close to the big city but living in a smaller community. And I think that would be a big one that we could push something towards that to get people to move from the city to El Dorado via maybe some sort of promotion on telecommuting.
Okay, thank you. I truly believe that we're lucky enough to have one of the best community colleges in the United States. What's, what do you feel El Dorado's relationship should be, and how would you improve that relationship with Butler Community College? Lawrence, we'll start with you.
I agree. The college is a big thing. We bring in probably 10,000 students there a year or more. And that, those students are buying stuff here in town, living here in town, some of them potentially stay here. I think if we could promote more with them by using BG Stadium for more events and not just football out there, I think that would go a long way. And just, you know, working together here in town, we're together, and I hate to see them building more stuff over in the Andover area when we could have those departments here in El Dorado and students living here and going to college here.
Thank you. Bill?
Yeah, so, I mean, you're right. Butler is, it's the best community college in the United States for sure. But the reality is, it has an enormous economic impact on El Dorado and on Butler County and on South Central Kansas, a positive economic impact. We have to, as a city, we have to continue finding ways. We've been good partners with the college and the school district over the years, but we have to continue finding ways to grow that relationship. that relationship. You know, one of the challenges that we find from an economic development perspective is skilled labor or workforce training. I think that the city can certainly collaborate with the college in an effort to facilitate those relationships with our local businesses and in our Chamber of Commerce in El Dorado Inc. and Main Street to build out some workforce training opportunities. The college has great resources in that area. I agree with Lawrence and pretty much, you know, everyone that I talked to about, you know, finding new opportunities for events at BG Stadium. We did, you know, a few years ago, 10 years ago now, worked with the school district and the college to build the new football field, and for 10 years, there's been a lot of football played on it. But we, as a city, want to promote events there, concerts. That's what, that's the reason that we participated, one of the reasons we participated to build it. And the city has brought, you know, we've hired a new employee to really focus on those events and promotions. And so we should be expecting, you know, something big as we move into the next budget year. I think, I think it's about collaboration. It's about firming up the relationship that this community has always had with Butler. You know, Butler was the, kind of the beacon on the hill when I went to high school here, and that was the, you know, a great step for me to go and not have to spend a ton of money going straight to a four-year college. Butler helped prepare me for the next phase, and it still does that today. And the programs that are available there, every one of the programs that's available at Butler can benefit this city. If a student goes to school there, those students can find work in that area in this community, whether it's nursing or culinary or auto mechanics or, you know, welding, or gen ed, or education. So it's a resource that's as valuable to us as just about anything we have, and we need to embrace it.
Great, thanks, Bill. In your closing statement, please tell us what you believe the role of mayor is and how you will serve in that role. Bill?
Give me a second. Okay, sorry. So I do want to thank the El Dorado Chamber of Commerce, and you, Phil, and the city staff that, you know, is doing all the techno whiz stuff here to get this facilitated tonight. And I want to thank Lawrence for being up here. We talked in the hallway earlier, and, you know, it's great to be able to have this opportunity. We didn't do this a couple of years ago because these seats have gone uncontested for so long, and I truly am grateful that we get this opportunity. But most of all, thank you to all of you watching this evening. Events like this are super important, and they're a great part of the local election process because it serves as an opportunity to better get to know each of us. And on my part, I hope I was able to convey to all of you just a little bit about my passion for El Dorado and the wonderful community we have here. While there are a few key areas that we should continue to focus on, El Dorado's comprehensive plan provides a basic roadmap for us. The foundation of our community should include education, the arts, economic development, a revitalized downtown, a strong workforce and recreation. To attract strong companies to our city with better jobs, as mayor, I will continue to lead the commission in making decisions that enhance and expand in these categories. We all live in a beautiful city with amazing parks and the really awesome flowering landscape. The city's Parks and Recreation Master Plan can help guide us in the future development of space for activities in El Dorado for youth, young adults, and seniors. I believe in the importance of providing opportunities for all residents to be engaged and will work to make sure that resources are available to ensure that citizens of all ages and special needs in El Dorado can realize a great quality of life. But quality of life also means quality of jobs. The citizens of El Dorado want and need a vibrant downtown and business community. As mayor, I have led a commission that supports local businesses as well as encourages investment in industrial and economic development. Additionally, I will continue working with the commission in fostering a climate that empowers businesses and entrepreneurs to follow their ingenuity and invest in their dreams. El Dorado's had some very bold moments in our history, from the creation of the lake, to bringing in the correctional facility, to the expansion of the oil and gas areas, and to our improvements in the Parks and Recreation. The city of El Dorado advances by investing in our residents and in our quality of life. I'll close with this. I learned great values of character and hard work from my two awesome parents. They taught me what really matters is not your name, but who, what you get done. They taught me that you usually get more done when you work with people than you do than when you fight with people. They taught me that you must be prepared to take on the tough challenges because making a real difference in people's lives is what matters the most. While the events of the last year have been a little bit overwhelming for all of us, in my experience, when you combine effective leadership, positive leadership with committed people and creative solutions, the overwhelming becomes manageable and anything is possible. Once again, I want to thank all of you for being here tonight. Thank you to Lawrence. I'm asking tonight for the opportunity to continue serving as your mayor. So in addition for asking for your support, I'm here humbly asking for your vote as we move forward, so.
Thank you, Bill.
It's all yours, Lawrence.
I think being the mayor is about trusting our commission, our employees, helping direct them, and I also think it's about listening and brainstorming, not only when someone has a problem, but also to their ideas. I'm running because I want to be more involved and encourage more people to become more involved, even in small ways. We should be proud of our community and work together to make it better and make long-lasting memories for our current and future citizens. I was raised in this community. I have a business in this community. I'm a parent in this community, so I'm invested in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much for your thoughtful answers, and thank you for being here tonight. This concludes tonight's candidate forum. I want to thank each of our candidates for their remarks and answers to the questions, and for everyone here tonight and listening tonight. A recording of tonight's forum will be available on the city and the chamber website tomorrow. I want to thank you all for coming, tuning in. Please get out and vote on November 2nd. From City Hall in El Dorado, Kansas, good night, everybody.